Trespassers, since we forgive those trespass against us and leave it not to the patients, but the Lord as a people, the United Kingdom, our power will be known forever.
Pledge your allegiance to the United States of America. It's a good report, the four wishes now is, one nation under God, and the good is above all. But let us see that justice for all.
You want to call the rules?
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Etherly?
Yeah.
Right. Mr. Saint Columbia?
Present.
Mr. Messina?
Present.
Dr. Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we have a quorum established and we didn't get any minutes here.
No, not yet.
Okay. Right, uh, meeting, minutes for the last meeting will be on the next agenda for approval. So we'll move into our first items of business, but we have guests here on the Health and the Health Foundation presentation, and so we'll go ahead and let our guest come up. Uh, Dr. Miller and Mr. Wright, you can come on up.
So, uh, this is, they're actually gonna be making the presentation, uh, but we have, uh, Mr. Ed Pat Wright, who is, uh, he's our president of the Health and the Health Foundation along with Rex Jones, who is our interim, uh, CEO of the hospital, and so they'll be explaining to you what is it going to talk about.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and ladies and gentlemen of the, uh, city council. We, um, I'll try to speak up loud, Mr. Joe, so you can hear me over there. I take, I got the signal. What, the main reason why we're coming to y'all is, you know, trying to get this, we took over the hospital June 1st, and we're looking at different, you know, areas of funding and grants and, and looking into the new market tax credit program, which, uh, you know, Progressive was also doing, and part of those deals, you know, when you're doing that, they really want to see that you have a strong lease, you know, that you're not gonna be, you know, we're, we're, we're wanting to do some repairs on the building, it needs a new roof. We, we just spent a hundred thousand on a new boiler, we spent, um, money on chiller. We've, you know, we've already spent a half a million on repairs, but it needs a lot. And so we're gonna, you know, for us to do that, we're gonna have to go and get, we'll look at the new market tax credit loan. We've, we've applied for that community assistant grant that I think everybody probably applied for some of that, but, uh, the governor had, and, and different, but we can't, you know, our, right now, our lease is just, um, one year, because nobody, you know, after Progressive left, um, you know, there wasn't, wasn't anything done. So I think when, when nobody does anything within thirty days, it automatically renews for one year. So when we put down on an application that we have a one-year lease, but we're wanting to, you know, two and a half million dollars for a roof or something, you know, it doesn't really, well, what if, you know, what if you get kicked out after a year? But anyway, we just, we want to come to the city, the old lease before, uh, you know, the old lease was for, but before Quorum and CHS took over, that ended in nineteen ninety-eight, was a hundred dollars a year, paid on the first day of the year, and it was like a ninety-nine-year lease that, you know, could be terminated with, you know, by either party with a certain amount of notice. But, you know, we need a twenty, forty-year lease or something, just so we can go out and get funding for the hospital. You know, it just makes more sense. So that's the main reason that we're here, and, um, you know, we're about to get this hospital in a, in a good point where it's gonna, it'll cash flow, I think, you know, it's never gonna be, nobody's gonna ever make a lot of money out of that thing, but we're gonna, we're, I think we can get it where the foundation doesn't have to pump any more money into it, and it will stand on its own. The, if we, uh, uh, the hospital right now, part of the situation, the deal for us to assume operations of the hospital, when we felt like Progressive was just gonna go bankrupt or abandoning it or whatever, we had to assume their debt, which was a little over three million at the, between the two banks. So like, that they, million and a half for each bank, plus, at the time, they told us it was about two million dollars in debt, um, that they owed, and we agreed to pay all their vendors that they owed money to. And, um, about the time we think we've got them all paid, more show up, but it's probably more like two and a half million that they owed vendors. So you can kind of see that we've already, we've already put two-point-two million of the Health and the Health Foundation money into it, paying bad debt. And we don't really have any more money to put into it, that's why we're looking for other avenues, because our money's tied up with, we still owe some on the GMS East Building, and we've got, a lot of it is, um, collateral for the loan at the bank. We had to co-sign Progressive loan for the three million dollars at the bank. So, you know, we can't just keep putting money into it with, you know, but, like I said. And, um, like I said, Rex, the, Rex is, is a, has been at a lot of hospitals, he was at Magnolia before he was here, but he has a lot of experience as CEO of a hospital, and through the Rural Health Partnership, they're kind of guiding us, helping us with their CFO and, and their expertise on operations from day to, on day-to-day operations of the hospital. And, um, once we, you know, we, we get the, um, get this, the, the, the hospital's doing great, we've got a, you know, there's kind of a misnomer with the, um, people think that we're just an emergency room, which we are, an REH hospital, Rural Emergency Hospital, but people think that they can't be admitted or whatever. The hospital can do observation patients, and if your doctor here in town wants to admit you, he could admit you all day long, he just has to round with, on you. They, uh, we don't have, you know, a hospitalist or anybody to do it, but the, with the REH model, if our ER doctors think you need to be in the hospital for forty-eight hours, they can put you in there for forty-eight hours or whatever, and get you hydrated or antibiotics started or whatever. Once we start doing that, that'll increase our revenue, but we've got to get a lot of our nursing, we gotta add some nurses and things like that, which we're working on. Um, we just hired one more, and so we're doing a lot to make the more cash positive, which, you know, I feel pretty good that six months from now, we'll be in really good shape, but we'll, um, you know.
We absolutely need that hospital.
Oh, definitely.
Industry or anything in this community, the people in this community need the hospital.
Yeah.
Uh, what do you want from us tonight?
Well, I, I asked our, you know, attorney, I said, what do you think we should ask for? And we need a twenty-year lease, he said, I would ask for forty, but, you know, whatever y'all decide, we need a, you know, we need a lease, I, I think a forty-year lease is not too much to ask, I mean, you know, the hospital, it's a lot more facility than we need, and that building is, for sure. But, you know, but we're gonna, we're gonna be here, we plan to be here forever. So, I mean, forty years is not too much, I mean, if we have to, if we end up having to get some funding, you know, we may need twenty years to pay it off, pay it back, you know?
Yeah.
Cause it needs a lot of work.
So you, you, you feel comfortable with a forty-year lease?
Yeah.
From, uh?
Yeah.
To get what?
And I don't know, uh, city attorney, Mr. Valley, you, you, you have the old, you know the old lease? I brought pieces of it, cause I didn't print out the whole ninety-five.
Old lease was starting out as a bond issue.
Yeah, it was.
It was a bond issue, and initially it was done in nineteen ninety-eight, it's a bond issue.
Mm-hmm.
And for the sake of the public's sake, uh, bond issue is a loan, the city owns the, uh, the hospital.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't have a structure, however, the city does not operate the hospital. Uh, the city owns the land, but we don't own the business.
Yeah.
And the business is always operated independent of the city. Uh, the, the terms were that through the terms of the bond, that, that, uh, in lieu of rent, they would, uh, pay the bond, and the bond was paid throughout from each lease, leasehold to each leasehold. Uh, it was, the rent was paid that way, that by paying the bond, and once the bond was paid for, then after that, I believe that the Health and the Health Foundation started receiving the rental agreement, rental income from whoever the, uh, occupants were, and the cities didn't receive anything. And so at the expiration of the lease, the difficulties that former mayor Franklin had, that he insisted that we have, if we're gonna lease it, that we leased it for more money, cause previously you had the relationship after the bond was paid for, Health and the Health Foundation received the lease, even though the city owned the money, e- even though the city owned it. Now, the city didn't pay any op, didn't pay anything, we paid, uh, for any repairs or any of that, all that was done. The city just, the city just owned the building. Uh, at this point, one complication that we have, and that you all are aware, you all, uh, this body settled a case with the county for all the past due jail fees, and I can't remember what the amount is, but it's over two hundred thousand, and we were supposed to pay that with the sale of the hospital. And so the county is still trying to collect that from us, and, and wants the city to, uh, to do something regarding that. I think that if you're gonna lease it, we got to resolve that issue as well, whatever it don't pay to the county, uh, because Mr. Lee's constantly calls about it, the county lawyers called Mr. Lee about it, and they, every, every month, want us to give an update on what's the status of the hospital, is it selling, what's gonna happen? Now, are you gonna lease it, what you're gonna do so we can pay the county? Cause we made over to, to the court, that at the end of the day, whatever income we get from the sale or lease, we're giving it to the county, uh, to pay the debt. The, not giving it all, but I'm saying paying the county. Madam, do you remember what it, what it was, it's two hundred and some thousand, right?
They said a hundred and fifty?
Hundred and fifty.
City, the county attorney says.
Right, a hundred and fifty thousand. And so that's, that's what the, the, the obstacle that we have at this point.
Yeah.
Um, I don't see the issue with a long-term lease or anything like that, but I think we have to resolve the, the, that one issue.
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, that part, uh, you know, Judge Hall has mentioned that to me in a couple of times as an option possibly, and I was, but I don't, I don't know how long that's gonna take, which I wanna work out, but in the meantime, we just need, we need to be able to show in writing to these, like for the new market tax credit, and, uh, uh, that we have, uh, you know, a long, a, a, a long-term lease, we don't want to ask them for, um, you know, eight million dollar new market tax credit, which some of that will be forgiven, but most of them will end up being a long-term loan for a building we only have a lease on for a year at a time. You know, that's, that's our.
We absolutely have to have that hospital.
Yeah.
And we need to do everything we can to make sure it stays here. You got a board of directors and, and run by the, uh, Health Foundation now, financially and, uh, I know at my age, I'd like to, I feel more comfortable, you know, that it's there.
Everybody in this room can tell a story of someone's been in that hospital, and, and, and I was, ninety-nine percent of them have positive things to say, and it's, um, we are, we're, I mean, I don't know, I saw two hel, one, one or two helicopters out there today. I mean, we're, I don't know where we'd be, Mr. Wilson may know, but there were at least a couple of people air-vacked out today, and, and, you know, I mean, where would we be without the hospital to at least, you know, stabilize them? And I, I've had my parents out there many a times, and, you know, it, it is, it's a blessing. We got, we've gotta have it, I mean.
You certainly have that, so, you certainly have my support.
Well, I appreciate it, and whatever y'all decide, but we, you know, we just need to be able to show, you can't go to the bank and get a loan without saying, hey, you know, even the, the, the two banks would like to see us have a better, oh, you know, we don't, you know, a long-term lease, because a year at a time, and, you know, they've each loaned, we loaned Progressive one and a half million, and.
The longer the lease you have, the more strength you have.
Exactly.
In obtaining money, if I understand.
Right, right, exactly.
Yeah, well, I, I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
I, I don't think anybody at the table have a problem with the lease, I think the issue is the obligation of the hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Well.
We need to resolve, excuse me, we need to resolve that issue as, as well, and see how we can do that, um, simultaneously.
Well, Mayor Etherly, you've managed to, um, save quite a bit in just this last month. Is there not a way that we could earmark, um, a certain amount of money, uh, per every whatever, to cover that one hundred and fifty and still give them what they need to move forward?
We. Before you answer that, I, I, I think one of the things we need to do is this, I think we need to get the county judge, the hospital, and the mayor in the same room, and it's in the blessings of the city for all three parties to get this resolved. Cause the county needs the hospital, the city needs the hospital, the hospital needs to structure. And so I, I think part of it is, I'm not trying to bash the county or anything like that, I, I, I wanna make sure that everybody's trying to operate in the same, in, 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 in the, what's in the best interest of the citizens. Because on one hand, the hospital, uh, can eventually pay something on, on a lease, uh, but on the other hand, we have the immediate obligation to pay, uh, the county, and the county has been very adamant that every month, they've, they've been calling Mr. Lee, like, hey, when you gonna give us some money?
I, I think we need to go on record as a, as a city council, that we are a hundred percent in support of the movement of the hospital, and that we, we.
I think we can do that by acclamation, I think everybody's able to.
Make a motion, uh, that we support the, uh, uh, purpose of a forty-year lease, if we possibly can, and resolve whatever we have to do to, to handle it, but we as a city need to support this hospital and grant them a forty-year lease if they desire it, and that's the motion I make.
I see.
Okay?
And so there's a motion by Saint Columbia to grant a forty-year lease to.
Yeah, just.
Hold on a second, the, the, the corp, I wanna make sure I get this right in, in a minute, this is the Hell and the Hospital.
It's the Health and the Health Foundation.
Health and the Health Foundation, it's gonna go to Hell and the.
Health and the Health Foundation, and we operate the hospital in the Phillips, um, Phillips Hospital Corporation, and then the, the clinic in Houndon, you know, but anyway, yeah, that's two entities we absorb from Progressive, where Phillips Hospital Corporation and Phillips Clinic Corporation.
Okay. Motion by Saint Columbia to approve a forty-year lease to the Health and the Health Foundation, in support of those other entities, which essentially are the hospitals, seconded by Dr. Miller. Um, is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think you just go on record at this point, cause we still don't have a lease available or any of that, that kind of stuff, but we can work our way through all that.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, you, right now, you just said.
Yeah.
So, so we can take his motion as a motion to, to move forward at least on the, on the preparation of a forty-year lease. Um, to answer Ms. Miller's question, uh, of course, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that would be one of those debts that we owe, that's in the, the millions of dollars of debts that we owe. Um, in terms of our ability to do it all at once, I would say absolutely, we cannot do it all at once, but as we move forward, I, I, I do think we have the ability to do it, I don't know if the county's interested in some type of alternative agreement where we do it in a structured, on a structured manner, but certainly that's, that's, that's a possibility. Yes, yes, sir.
Can Mr. Joe say something?
Yes.
Okay. I apologize, coming in, getting late in the game here, and then kind of getting the handle on what's going on, but one of the things I, I do wanna to say is, I, I absolutely agree with Ed Pat, that the hospital, I think, is gonna make it. But I don't want to go under, or provide any assumption to anyone that this is gonna be a money-making operation. So I, I, the money the hospitals make is gonna be, will be very thin margins, and I think the money that the hospital makes is gonna need to go back in for capital expenditures on the facility. So if you're trying to look at this as a potential income eventually for some type of lease, I just, I don't see it. In my experience, I, I don't see that that's something to, to count on. I think, I think we're gonna be here, I think we'll be self-sustaining, but I just wanna throw my two cents in to make sure that we're not looking at this as the potential income.
Y- 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 yes, sir, and, and I think we all probably understood that without it being spoken. We will, we have a similar story to tell at this table, and so we, we, we were counting our coins as we were talking about paying the, the county debt, which is a separate issue from, from yours.
Right, and, and the other, the other part about it is just simply, uh, because there's this court obligation to pay it, uh, as city attorneys, we can't go ahead and obligate ourselves just to say, uh, we're gonna give a hundred dollars a year for forty years, and the sum I know is that the county is what, what we were trying to avoid doing, just, just for clarity.
Yeah, I think, you know, when the judge talked to me, county judge, he mentioned he would, for the city to deed over the hospital, and he would forgive the debt. Now, that's not what I can't, you know, that's, to me, that was between y'all and them, I wasn't gonna, you know.
Well, the hospital's worth over two million dollars, what we deed, deed.
Well.
I understand, the, the appraisal, appraisal and.
I know, well, I know, I mean, we've even considered even building our own building and just leaving it, because it's so much more than we need, we need something more like what they have in West Memphis now, and we could do that, but it's, it's, we wanna try to keep that facility going, but.
I understand, but.
Yeah, and thi- this is something here, I'm gonna pass around, but this shows what other communities are doing for their hospitals, they're giving the money.
Yeah.
Yeah, we understand.
Yeah.
But the thing I was just saying, just for the record, and I'm not, I know you understand this, uh, Mr. Wright, Mr. Ed Pat. Uh, the thing about it is, I was just saying, it's, it's worth more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I mean. I, I like to think, I mean, we're, we're, we're looking at, you know, maybe two million to put a new roof on it.
Yes, sir.
We've already spent a hundred thousand on boiler system this year, which is, you know, which, you know, I mean, you look at, the city of Stuttgart gives their hospital their two-point-three million dollars a year, DeWitt gives theirs. Let's see, what was that? DeWitt Little Town, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year they get.
Those from sales taxes.
These, some of these are sales taxes, um, millages, yeah. I mean, they realize the importance, they're.
Sure.
You know, the city of, um, Conway, their hospital, they, their city hos, their city leases their hospital to them, it's not on this, but you can pass right there, for one dollar. Right here.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, they, that's the importance, you've got to have the hospital.
Well, that's what we need.
Nobody, I mean, I'd appreciate it if y'all would mow the grass for us, that'd save us about three thousand a month, you know? Three six hundred. I mean, you could, you mean, you know, it is, it. Progressive left us, y'all know, we settled up the water bill finally over several months, you, you imagine what the electric bill was they left us, you know?
Gas bill.
Gas bill. We just had to settle with a company, they owed a gas company a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, never paid them, the whole time they were here. So if they made y'all believe that that building is worth two or three million dollars, they're, they were, I mean, they're, they were, you know? They were coming from, you know.
Tell them how much the electric bill was.
Well, the electric bill was four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Yeah.
Now, for the sake of the citizens, this is again, but, but we were discussing before, uh, the, the city owns the hospitals proper, the city has never run the business of the hospital. And so a lot of the, a lot of the things that were said, and privately and publicly, about the city's fault that the hospital is in this condition, et cetera, uh, as you hear again, the city does not operate the business of the hospital, city owns the structure.
Yeah.
And so I just wanted to emphasize that, and, and as they eloquently articulated, all those debts that were there were done by Progressive, they had nothing to do with the city of Hell and West Houndon.
Yeah.
And the deal falling through had nothing to do with the city of Hell and West Houndon.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate it, y'all's time, and whatever, you know, y'all actually have a motion in a second, and you've had discussion, y'all can vote on it, but we just need a good lease so we can go out and get somebody to keep it open. But we.
I agree.
You know, we can't give, we know, Health and the Health Foundation, we, you know, we were giving out a four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars a year in grants to the community that we can't do anymore, because we, we, we're paying bills. You know, just.
Well, I thank you very much for your effort to, providing that hospital for us. We absolutely have to have that hospital. You ever gonna draw industry to this community, they're not gonna come here if we don't have a hospital, I can tell you that. Uh, so we, we need that hospital, and we need to support it, and this city needs to back it. We need to be paying y'all, like you say, instead of y'all paying us anything. So that's my feelings about it.
And we can, we can have an attorney draw up the lease, or look at the lease, and we can, if y'all are, you know, decide to go that way.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Did we ever vote on?
No, I'm waiting on you.
Well, this calls for question.
Yeah. I decided to, um, decide and try to work it out, but who's gonna set that up? City attorney?
The, the mayor and I'll set that up. The, the only reason, the only reason I keep mentioning it is you have a court order telling us that we're supposed to pay it. And, um, that's the reason why we, as before we entered into a lease, say, here, court, hey, I don't care what you say, we're just gonna lease it out for a hundred bucks a year, that's, that's all I'm saying.
No, listen.
I am for us having a hospital here, I am for all that, I just wanna make sure that we do it in a proper way, that's all. But I, I think that the mayor's ready to call the question, so we can.
Yes, sir.
Resolve this.
Um, Madam, I was calling.
Ms. Davis? Mr. Saint Columbia?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Mayor Etherly?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Fix yes.
Right, motion passing, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, so we'll be in contact as we proceed. Okay.
Mr. Wright, gentlemen, before you leave, I know you all spoke, but can you introduce yourself to the public for, for the sake of, uh,
uh, chairman of the Health and the Health Foundation, and have with me.
I'm Rex Jones, the interim chief executive officer for Health and the Hospital.
All right.
Well, we thank, we thank you all for being here.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I'm gonna go back up to the old business portion of the agenda. Um, the first item on the agenda is, is the proposal for dispatch, and we have a contract now. That would be the four-page agreement.
Looks like this.
Second page. Yep.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
God, French.
Okay.
That's a, uh, an ordinance, a resolution.
So you have your agreement in front of you, and it's a, it's a five-year agreement, um, the total cost is eighty-five thousand dollars, that's what we would pay to the county, they've asked for four quarterly pay, or a quarterly payment during the course of the year, which would be four payments per year. And the total would be twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars per payment. I still see a few people thumbing, I don't wanna get too far ahead of you. Ms. Davis, it.
Yes.
That's it, Ms. Davis. Looks like that, yeah, okay. Right.
There was also agreement for nine-one-one dispatching service.
Yes, sir, that's it, and this agreement would take, would take effect on October the first.
First day of.
October.
October.
Yes, sir, and that would give all of our employees essentially two weeks' notice. The highlights of the agreement, I told you what the payment terms were, that's a total of eighty-five thousand per year, uh, four payments, one per quarter, twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. It's a five-year agreement. They would be the employer for all dispatches, we would have no liability as it relates to, let's say, the, 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 uh, the operation of dispatch, and how they perform their job duties, we would have no liability for that. Um, they would be in charge of those employees, and any terminations or disciplinary actions would flow through the county, not through the city.
Going in this direction now, what is the bottom line savings that we will save by doing this?
It's two hundred and forty, right?
What, what?
Okay, so, so the, the, the pay reduction for us, the payroll reduction for us, projected through, we took the numbers through half of the year, projected them out over the course of the year, this included, um, wages, overtime, APers, payroll taxes, uh, health coverage was two hundred and fifty-two dollars, two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. The cost to the county is cash, eighty-five thousand dollars annually, so the net is about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars savings to the city, that's the net.
Two hundred thousand.
Yes, yes, and of course, one of the things.
That was about the number.
We explained that's per annum, right?
Yes, that's, that's annually, annually. That's annual, that's, that's per year, per year.
Yeah.
So, quarter of a million dollars in payroll savings, we take on and, and a debt for eighty-five thousand, so the net is, is a hundred and seventy thousand. Yes, sir.
That, that's quite a bit of savings.
Yes, sir.
For five years.
Um. There's no motion, but is there any discussion?
Motion.
Okay.
For us to approve the annual local agreement for the nine eleven dispatching services.
Motion by Ms. Miller to approve the agreement as presented for nine-one-one dispatching. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Saint Columbia, is there any discussion? Madam clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes.
Mister Saint Columbia?
Yes.
Miss Davis? Mayor Ethely?
Yes.
Mister Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Six yes.
And that will take effect October the first.
October first, uh, that will take effect and at that point, the county will be handling all of the dispatch. And of course, the. What a lot of people don't know is that the county has done a great deal of dispatching for us over the last month. We had some radio problems. And so they had already been doing it for a certain period of time, so.
They don't hire any of our dispatch people.
They make no promises about who they will hire to, to do the job and by us adopting this agreement, we have no control over who they hire. They will be responsible for any liability that arises out of that employment and that operation. Uh, they'll be responsible for any discipline that comes out of that. If somebody needs to be disciplined or terminated, the county has complete control over that.
Pity we don't have.
Ye- yes, sir, and the agreement does set out our responsibilities and I didn't say this on the front end, but I, I, I talked to the chief just to make sure there were no. Operational issues, uh, that arose out of the agreement shared with the city attorney, everybody gave the green light on it and so. So, it's been approved.
Right, now, what, what's gonna be the difference for them as far as? The actual dispatching, cause I would think city is a lot more intense in it than county dispatching. Or is it not?
Yeah, if you're asking if there's more activity in the city, certainly there's more activity. The county will pick that up and, you know, like, like, like anything else, uh, they'll, they'll adjust to the traffic level. And like I said, they, they did a. I can't remember what day in August it was, but the, we, we had some radio problems. We actually had to call someone in to fix it. We had a two week period of time. Just in the last month where the county ha- handled all of the dispatch. When, when our phone lines were down last year, the county handled all this, yeah, so they, they've done it before.
And just for the public's sake, a hundred and seventy thousand times five is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's the total savings over five years.
Next item on the agenda is gonna be the resolution for D R A, that's Delta Regional Authority, uh, the grant. They sent over a form that they want us to, um, it's a resolution. Should have that in your packet and it looks like this. I, I guess it's need to start numbering these pages, these items, but it looks like this, it's a resolution. This comes from. East Arkansas Planning and Development. And they want us to adopt this resolution. This is on the landfill grant. Last meeting, we did a motion to authorize me to sign off on the award notices and any documents that need to be signed. They also need us to pass this resolution. And this again is the half million dollar, uh, landfill grant that's been awarded to the landfill so that they can fix, repair, upgrade their leach aid system. And so they're gonna need us to pass this resolution. And some parts of this, it's a form, this is a form, so everything in it doesn't necessarily apply, but we have to fill in the blanks as we go. Uh, so.
Cause it requires us to, if I may, man.
Yes, sir.
It requires us to note. Uh, this is kind of resolution, but at the same time, it's kind of a recordation of minutes. Cause it, we have to note who made the motion, who made the second, who all voted for it, et cetera, in this resolution. And the date it was passed and et cetera, that's why it isn't completely filled out because that hadn't occurred at this point. But this is a, uh, Delta Regional Authority, um, resolution. Uh, that authorizes the, the grant and your support of it, so the, so that the landfill can collect the funds that. Mr. Wilson has already applied for.
It also appoints me to perform all the duties of said award, which means the signing. And in the event that there's, uh, someone else who, who takes the, the, the mayor's chair, says the cha- under the change, the new mayor would. Also be authorized to perform those duties. Um, and what's the number on this?
Nine.
Number nine. Is there a motion to adopt? Okay, motion made by Ms. Miller. Is there a second? I'm sorry, I didn't.
Miss Davis.
Miss Davis.
Mrs. Davis.
Second. Any dis- is there any discussion?
Let me read it.
Yes, sir, go ahead, go ahead.
Didn't have a chance to read it.
Ta- take your time. Mi- Mr. Saint Columbia, would you like, we, we just have a city attorney to lead this, so everybody.
Uh, this is resolution number nine. Uh, swear as the Delta Regional Authority hearing after D R A. Was created by Congress by the Delta Regional Authority Act of two thousand as amended, as, as a federal state partnership now comprised of two hundred and fifty-two counties. And parishes within eight states, Alabama, Arkansas, Illinois, Kentucky, Louisiana, Mississippi, Missouri, and Tennessee. In order to remedy the severe and chronic economic distress by stimulating economic development and foster partnerships. Uh, that will have a positive impact on the Delta Regionals economy. Whereas the city of Helena West Helena, Arkansas, acting by and through its city council. Proposes to apply for a, an award with the D R A for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five federal award program cycle. Whereas the, the R A requires that a person be designated, appointed, and given authority to perform certain duties. And administration of said award for and on behalf of the awardee. Whereas the city, the Helena West Helena City Council met in a regular session on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, and those present are, uh, Mr. Saint Columbia, Mr. Messina, Doctor Miller. Ms. Miller and Ms. Davis, the city treasurer, city attorney, and, and the, uh, mayor pro tempel ethely. Uh, and that was a quorum present, in ways they mostly made by Ms. Miller. And was seconded by Mrs. Davis to designate at a point. A Don Arthely to perform all duties and administration of said award, which carried a uni- a unanimous vote and was recorded in the minutes, what this is. Uh, whereas the motion was made and seconded. By, there hadn't been one yet, but there has to be a motion made and seconded to provide additional funds in the amount of, blank amount. To awardee, uh, was. Carried by voice voting, recorded in the minutes, whereas the motion was made and seconded by blank person. For any in kind, there's no in kind required by this. And it says, whereas the motion was made and seconded by X person that, in the event of administrative change. The new mayor shall continue to have the authority under this resolution, now therefore be resolved. By the city council of City Helena West and Arkansas Falls, that Don Arthely is hereby designated a point. And appointed to perform on behalf of the city of Helena West Helena. And has authority to make those acts and assume any and all duties in dealing with the war with D R A for fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-five. And that. The Don Arthely is authorized to execute and submit any and all documents, including but not limited to. Applications, award, award closing document requests for funds, staff reports to D, uh, D R A for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five. That the award, that the award, awardee agrees to provide, uh, no extra funds. And that in the event that this administration changed, the new, uh, mayor. Uh, shall constitute, shall continue to have authority under this resolution. Read and adopted on this September's, on this, the, uh, sixteenth day of September twenty twenty-five.
So we would actually execute this, uh, to serve until, uh, the election of a new mayor.
Election, appointment, whatever, whatever comes.
What, what, what it's saying is, they wanna make sure in case the governor appoints somebody. Uh, that, uh, not only does he have authority, that they don't have to come back to the city. For to finalize, to get a, additional authority to, uh, continue with all the things, cause if the mayor appoints somebody tomorrow. I mean, the governor appoints somebody tomorrow, then you have to come back again and get, get the approval, they're saying, uh, we wanna make sure to get, not only Mr. Ethely. But if, if something happens in the interval before it's closed, that that person has authority to act too.
Is, is there an urgency to do this tonight?
Yes. You applied for the fund, mu- musta. When John Edwards is here, he talked about the, 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 the grant that we received from D R A.
Oh, okay.
And when, uh, Mr. Wilson was here, he talked about the grant from D R A. It's been pending for a while, we just, this is part of the process. That they need you to prove that we have authority to go forward.
Okay.
To, to try to obtain the funds.
Let, let me say it a different way, Mr. Saint Columbia, the landfill is operated under consent order. And this is one of the things that they have to do to get off the consent order. So the sooner we pass this, they can get that money that allows them to repair and upgrade the leach aid system. So there's a motion, there's a motion and second on the floor. Is there any other discussion?
It was motion by Ms. Miller, uh, second by Mrs. Davis.
Okay.
All right.
I call for the question.
Miss Davis?
Yes.
Mister Saint Columbia?
Yes.
Doctor Miller?
Yes, sir.
Mister Messina?
Yes.
Mayor Ethely?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Six yes.
Okay.
All right, um, next item on the agenda is water department update. Uh, the water department superintendent is not here tonight, but there's really only one update, but it is fairly large. Um, last week, we learned that we had, we've done everything that we need to do. You've heard us talk in the previous weeks about loan closing. Um, that's the money that we have to start the repair of the water systems. Uh, we've done everything that we need to do from a city standpoint, and so we are now just simply awaiting further instructions and. Uh, to come from A N R C. Uh, but we've checked all of our boxes now, and so hopefully within the next, uh, I'm just, I'm making up this number because I don't have any information. Hopefully within the next sixty days or so, we'll actually get it closed, but the big news is. Uh, we exhaled for a minute this past week because we've covered all of our bases on this one. So, uh, that's the water update. Oh, and the, okay, so. This money is gonna be broken down into several loans. The first is gonna be a million dollars. It primarily covers preliminary engineering. And so our engineer will be on the ground once it closes and they'll be doing the work that needs to be done to plan all of the other things. That will come out of the money. Uh, just as soon as we get closed on this one, we'll actually go to work on, there'll be another closing and another closing and another closing. And each one of those closings will fund different items, but those will come out of the engineering plan. So the first one is gonna cover preliminary engineering, but like I said, this is the one that kinda kicks it all off. So we've done all we need to do at this point and we'll wait for the instructions on this.
You're talking about our engineer.
Our engineer?
Yes.
Mr. Wild.
Mr. Wild has been submitting all the documents on this.
So, that'll be a little positive news for everybody. Um, next item on the agenda is finance update, Mr. Saint Columbia, you, uh, I think you're aware, Ms. Ramsey is still putting together that list of debt. Uh, that you've requested and once we get it again, we'll share with everyone. I think I can probably, wi- wi- without that list, we can't put, put a calculator to this. But I'll tell you that there are several positive signs. More anecdotal, but there's positive signs that, that, you know, I love to report to you. Um, I talked to, uh, Ms. Ramsey's staff on, uh, Friday, uh, I, I, I told the payroll clerk, I said, I'm gonna hold my chest. And you tell me how much payroll is, is, this month, this week. And it was a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Um, to give you some perspective, when Ms. Ramsey testified over in Little Rock, she said average payroll is about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, so a hundred and fifteen is a significant, significant drop. If you project that out over an annual basis, you're talking about the difference between one forty and one fifteen. My math tells me that's twenty-five thousand times ten, twelve, that's over a quarter of a million dollars. And what that represents is, is the way you're gonna see that. Twenty-six times twenty-six, but what's embodied in that is another thing. Uh, we counted employees on Friday again. We have ninety-eight employees for the city, so we're under a hundred. Uh, for the first time since.
Now.
Ninety-eight employees, so we're under a hundred for the first time since, since I've been here. We're able to pay a few bills now, and so. It's good.
When you testified, it, it was a hundred and thirty? When you testified, how many was it?
We, we, we need to get it down to close to seventy.
Oh, you can't get to seventy, Mr. Saint Columbia, I promise you, you can't get to seventy. You can't get to eight either. Unless you want, unless you, unless you wanna abandon some services, you're not gonna get to eight.
No, no.
You're not gonna get to eight, but, but we are under a hundred now. We have a significant payroll reduction. I don't think they struggled to make it, Mr. Ms. Ramsey can answer. But I don't think they struggled to make payroll this past week. And so that's, that's, that's good news. I know they're able to pay bills and, uh, that's something that we weren't able to do.
Need to pay our bills.
Uh, a short time ago, and I know that some of those have been paid, but again, once we get the list, we can put pen to paper. We'll add your calculator and we'll see where we are.
Can we get a printout on what we, what we owe now?
When that's what she's working on right now, Ms. Saint Columbia. Oh, um, Lofi. Lofi, um, we're in a position now to entertain a payment plan on Lofi.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if some of you remember the email tracking from earlier in the spring, uh, at that time, we owed Lofi maybe about six hundred thousand dollars. And they discouraged us from engaging in a payment plan. Because they said if you, if you start a payment plan and you don't make it, it's gonna be really bad for you. And so we didn't entertain a payment plan, but now we're in a position to actually discuss a payment plan. And so what we're doing is they wanna meet with, with me, with the city attorney, with the treasurer. I think we're supposed to have somebody from the municipal league, uh, maybe general counsel on the line as well, and we're, we're trying to set up a conference call. So that we can discuss the, the, the terms of a payment plan. And so we hope to have a report on that, uh, within the next couple of weeks, maybe at the next meeting, so we can tell you how that goes. And, uh, that's a, one of the really big debts that we have right now, individual debts, and so if we can get on a payment plan on that. We feel comfortable about our ability to actually make it and hold to it now, so.
How about the, uh, I, I remember the. Eternal revenue we owe them a large amount of money. We doing anything on it?
Uh, the treasurer has been making some payments on that. I don't know what the balance is and he's not here right now. But he's been making some payments on that as well, so that's gonna be less than. The last report, put it that way.
Good.
Oh, better yet, better yet, I'll tell you what he told. It's not, it's not gonna, I'll tell you what he told me, uh, just yesterday. He said, we were able to pay. Something on that debt and when we made payroll, we were also able to pay the current. And so we, we made the payroll and we also paid the current taxes, is what he reported to me yesterday. So. It, it, there's some positive signs. Again, I don't know what the numbers are gonna be, but there are some positive signs and so. Uh, but just as soon as we come out with the actual list, we'll be able to just, like I said, put, put a calculator to it and we'll be able to determine where we are at this point.
Okay. I, 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 I saw this today. Garbage truck accident and all.
Yes, sir. Mr. Saint Columbia, if, if you will, that I actually, I added that to the agenda. Because of what that happened this morning. And so I added it to the agenda because we need to discuss that. Can we, we'll come back and catch that in just a minute. We have, uh, two ordinances that we need to pass. And then, uh, we'll, we'll talk about the garbage truck because it's gonna impact our garbage pickup. Um, next item on the agenda is the millage ordinance.
Um, the millage ordinance is a standard millage ordinance that's, that's passed every year. Um, the city has to pass it before the, the collection of the taxes, as you all are aware, our taxes are due. At the lawn, property taxes are due next month, and we have to pass this prior, it's the same standard.
Same as every year.
Every year, but it requires that we pass it every year.
Uh, well, I, I saw it here somewhere, I think.
What numbers this madam clerk, it's number?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven, uh-huh.
Okay. So.
Real, real in-person property, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
It's the same, same old, same old every year.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, we would.
Uh, yeah, I know what you're about to say, go ahead.
We didn't turn the motion to, to suspend the roof places on third and final reading, reading the title only.
I so moved.
Motion by Saint Columbia to place ordinance number seven on his third and final reading, reading the title only. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Davis, is there any discussion? Madam clerk, would you call the roll?
Mayor Ethely?
Yes.
Mister Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Doctor Miller?
Yes.
Mister Messina?
Yes.
Mister Saint Columbia?
Yes.
Six yes.
Ordinance number seven, twenty twenty-five, and ordinance leaving taxes on the realis- real and personal property located within the city limits of the city of Helena West Helena. Based on two, twenty twenty-four assessment to the freight, general expenses of the city of Helena West Helena, Arkansas for the year twenty twenty-four. They pay pensions to retired police officers and firefighters and pensioned widows and minor children. To cease police officers and firefighters and for other purposes.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Motion by Saint Columbia to adopt ordinance number seven. Motion by St. Columbia to adopt ordinance number seven. Is there a second? Second by, I'm sorry, second by Ms. Davis. Uh, madam clerk, what you call it all?
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Ethelley?
Yes.
Six yes.
Whatever the last one was best for discussion.
Okay. All right, their motion passes. I mean, that ordinance is adopted. Uh, next item on the agenda is request for approval to purchase one hundred garbage cans at seventy-four dollars each. That comes from Yeah, it's next, it's after that. I'm sorry. Um, the next item is a request for approval to purchase one hundred garbage carts, seventy-four dollars each. Uh, that comes from sanitation. We have a, quite a few people who don't have carts or the carts are damaged. It's been a number of years since we bought carts. They actually wanted more than that, and, uh, we got together, talked to Ms. Ramsey, uh, talked to, uh, sanitation, uh, people and agreed that we could do a hundred cart, uh, carts, start off with a hundred. And then as we move on, maybe we can acquire some more, but this would allow them to replace some of the damaged carts.
Got the money to buy.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's my concern.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We, we do.
We definitely need them.
And that's, and that's seventy-four hundred dollars is, is what the cost would be to purchase all your car.
That's that old. We're not dancing to that, are we? Put the button at the top, put it off. Let me show you. How you put this thing off? That's what I'm proud to tell you, this ain't like yours. Where's the ordinance on that? I, I didn't see it.
There's no ordinance on it. It's, it's below the bidding requirement, but it's above my, my spending authority, and so council would have to approve.
Okay. Okay.
But it just has to approve seventy-four hundred. If it's seventy-five hundred, you have to bid it out. But it's below his, it's above his spending limit, it's five thousand. And below bidding, but, so you're all going to adopt it by just voting in, in the media.
So we need to vote on it?
Yes, sir. You'll have to have a motion and a section.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we buy the carts. We got the money to do it with. Like you say, we have. So I'll make the motion that we buy the hundred carts.
Yes, sir. Motion by St. Columbia to approve purchase of a hundred garbage carts, seventy-four dollars each. Second by Ms. Miller. Is there any discussion? Madam clerk, what you call it all?
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Ethelley?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Six yes.
Missed it. Uh, motion passes. I'm sorry, uh, I missed an ordinance to waive competitive bidding. Yeah, I, I just realized. I missed an ordinance to waive competitive bidding. This is on the, uh, the articulated truck that you approved
Yeah.
last meeting. Uh, the clerk and the city attorney, uh, noted, or they told me over the last couple of weeks, they said, hey, we need to pass an ordinance to waive competitive bidding, and so that's what this is. And so if you would take a look at that, I guess this will be ordinance number eight.
It's a dump truck, huh?
Yes, sir. The articulated truck.
That's a very large dump truck. It's designed to operate in a, in a landfill, is what, what it is. But you all already told the chief we could do it. Uh, we've, uh, I've reviewed all the contracts over the past couple of weeks. We've changed some of the language, the lawyers for, for the finance company that got back with me, and we are ready to sign it, but we can't sign it until we have the approval. Well, the mayor cannot sign it until we have it approved.
What's that ordinance going to be?
Number eight?
Number eight.
Eight.
Is, is, is there a motion to suspend the rules based on third and final read, reading the title only?
Motion by Davis to place ordinance number eight on the third and final reading, reading the title only. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by St. Columbia. Is there any discussion? Madam clerk, what you call it all?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Ethelley?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Six yes.
Ordinance number eight, twenty twenty-five, an ordinance waiving competitive bidding in accordance with Arkansas code of anti-tattoos, section fourteen fifty-eight three oh three. Authorizing man to contract to purchase certain property for the city of Helena West Homa and for other related purposes. There needs to be a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Motion by St. Columbia to adopt. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Davis. Any discussion? Questions? Madam clerk, what you call it all?
Mayor Ethelley?
Yes.
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Six yes.
I'm over with, uh, except the emergency clause, there's an emergency clause in there.
Yes, sir. Uh, motion to approve the emergency clause is by St. Columbia. Is there a second? Second by Davis. Madam clerk, what you call it all?
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Mayor Ethelley?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Six yes.
That ordinance passes. Uh, the next item on the agenda is a base pay ordinance amendment for cler- clerical position for the clerk's office. Uh, you should have in front of you.
Yeah, this is a rough draft in front of you. It's ordinance number nine, twenty twenty-five. Uh, so that there wouldn't be an alarm. We only dealing with one position in this whole ordinance. To amend it, uh, so that the body could know, and this is a position that Madam Clerk wanted, uh, uh, and I defer the most to Ethelis, uh, and Madam Clerk.
Okay, so, uh, um, Ms. Ramsey, correct me if I'm wrong. Ms. Ramsey is losing a full-time employee this week. And that will leave her with one deputy clerk in her office. And so this particular position had been filled by Ms. Diane Tyler for a number of years. Ms. Tyler, at the time that she left the city, was making approximately fifty thousand dollars a year. This particular item in the base pay ordinance has not been changed since its creation in two thousand and six. It was set at minimum wage. And so, um, for the duties that this person will have to perform, and let me say this, the person who's leaving currently makes fifteen dollars an hour. What we ask to do is to set it at a competitive rate at fourteen dollars an hour. And Ms. Ramsey is not going to take on a full-time person to refill the seat. She's going to try to find a part-time person. But we have to change the base pay in order to do it. Uh, we talked about this over the last couple of weeks. Uh, we tried to find some options. We, we could not, but she believes she can fill it with a part-time person if we can find one. Uh, the concern is the types of duties that this person will have. They'll have to do reports for APers, reports for Lofi. And you heard some of the horror stories that were told by Mr. Edwards when he was here about reports being sent to different agencies. I don't know how to, I want to say it nicely, but we want someone who's going to have a certain skillset to be able to handle these reports. And in the past, we've had people who had that ability, but we want to be able to attract someone who has that ability to do these reports. But again, she's going to try to fill it with a part-time person. And so this level of pay will be less than what the person who currently holds the position makes. It'll be less than that. And going to try to do it with a part-time person so that she has at least two people in that office.
Right. This doesn't have to fund the position. This creates the position and creates the parameters for the pay. Uh, you still would have to fund the position, uh, but you funded it a larger amount already in your budget, if you get what I'm saying. Uh, but this is doing the, the base pay, uh, to show that you could start the salary out commensurate with this type of salary. And Madam Clerk has said she wants a part-time person in lieu of a full-time person.
And she's here, so I don't want to, I don't want to talk over her. She, she, she can. So if I said anything wrong, please correct me. I don't want to say anything that's wrong.
I'm just curious, do, do you have to do a base pay? Can you just give them more money? Can you just pay them more money?
No, because the person who comes in will be taking the position new, and then they will be bound by, at least for the first six months, at, at minimum wage.
Okay, whatever that current.
Yeah, and the, she, this person is going to have to do some things that we, we really want somebody who's going to bring, you know.
No, I, I understand the pay, and I think that it should be increased. I was just wondering, because it seemed like I had heard that somewhere, but I may have misheard that, that a base pay is just a base, but that you can pay somebody more than the base pay.
Well, with the council's approval, you can. The council can amend it, but it really is for the council to know what's being paid when people walk in the door.
I guess.
At least for six months.
Well, then the other thing is it cuts off the negotiation part of it, uh, when we bring people into the city, you know, um.
This is the pay.
Yeah, this, this is what it pays, and so you don't have to deal with all that, how much am I going to make, and some people negotiate a, a starting rate. This is what it pays.
Also, Dr. Miller, before, um, when you first came on, you had talked to Mayor Franklin, almost Ethelie, about why do we change base pay to do like ranges? We still haven't gotten there.
Yeah.
Uh, like you, you had discussed how typical jobs have a salary range from this to this.
Yeah.
We wanted to go there, but we haven't done so.
I'm sure.
But in next year's budget, that may be something that when we do the budget, we'll do salary ranges to start from here to here.
Yeah.
To give some discretion, but the, the, the primary intent of base pay is so, you had a history of mayors who were just basically slipping a P being and paying them, and so pulling from this line on, this line out, the council would look up and say, how do we have all these employees? And where did they come from, and how, how do we know how, how this person is being paid? And so it was for clarity.
Yeah.
And that's basically what the base pay is for, so you all would nothing be pulled over your eyes and you'd say, well, how did, how did Andre Vannigan on payroll? And when did we start paying him? Well, how do you make this much money? You would know from the front door that here's the line item, here's the position, and they start with the, where the position is, where is it is in the butcher. And so that's the two work together like that.
I, I was just thinking more like, if, so you, if you do the base pay, then you're locked into a higher salary, but in this case, it's so low.
Right, typically.
It probably needs to come up anyway.
Yes, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay.
But typically what is done is council set it lower and then raises, uh, after six months.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's up to the body how, how you do it. Uh, but base pay hadn't been really been, been dealt with because of the looming financial issues and so. But again, if for clarity, you, you can change it to say, hey, I think this should start from this range to this range. Or this range, because you did, the body did change as part of the other base pays. Like, uh, C D L drive, we changed, did a range from like thirteen dollars to seventeen dollars, something like that.
So you're going to have a, so you'll have a, a deputy and then there'll be a, um.
There'll be a part-time person.
Right now, we don't, we won't have anybody, but we'll.
She has one deputy, one full-time deputy, and when she loses that other person. Right.
That person's staying.
That person's staying.
Okay, and then, okay.
This is, this is less, this is less than the person, what the person making who's leaving.
No, no, I understand that. I just, I was making sure it was fully, it was a, a properly staffed.
And of course, in, in her office, they, they need to have enough people to have proper segregation of duties so that they don't cross over each other.
That's what I understand.
And, and, and so, yeah, we, but we're trying to do it as a and still save some money on, on the payroll by trying to attract a part-time person, so.
It's going to be tough. And so what if we don't, um, never mind.
This will require a motion, um, to adopt ordinance number nine by placing it on its third and final read and reading the title only, if the council so chooses to adopt.
Yes, just.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by, it's Maxine Miller, second by Mr. Kyle Miller to adopt ordinance number nine of twenty twenty-five by placing it on its third and final read and reading the title only. Is there any discussion? Madam clerk, what you call it all?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Mayor Ethelley?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Six yes.
Ordinance number nine, twenty twenty-five, an ordinance to, to fix the number and, and base pay of full-time city employees and elected officials to, to amend all other process ordinance for other purposes.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Miller. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Davis. Is there any discussion? Madam clerk, what you call it all?
Yes.
Mayor Ethelley?
Yes.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Motion clause.
There's an emergency clause. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Uh, motion by Ms. Miller to adopt emergency clause. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Davis. Any discussion? Madam clerk, what you call it all?
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Mayor Ethelie?
Yes.
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Six yes.
The garbage truck.
Okay.
I, I sent you all some, an email this morning along with some pictures. Uh, we got a call this morning around ten, ten-thirty or so. There had been an accident on Fourth Street down by De Soto School. Uh, we had a garbage truck. Um, I'm learning these numbers from you guys in sanitation. It's fifty-five. It's one of the automated trucks. It has the arm. It was hit from the rear by a car that apparently, uh, was driven by an individual who was not paying attention. Uh, there were no skid marks. It slammed into the rear of that garbage truck. Uh, I'm told that, uh, uh, there were injuries. I do not know the condition of the person who, um, who was driving the vehicle. They were taken uh, to the hospital by, by ambulance. Um, the, it was a minivan. It was, it, it looked really bad. It looked really bad. The windshield was completely crushed in. Um, but, uh, the garbage truck suffered some damage to the rear. The wheels were completely knocked from the, uh, from the, from the unit itself, dislodged. I sent you, you can see that in the pictures. Also, the, uh, the rear of the truck, uh, was damaged and just the, um, the eyeballing of it says that truck is, is basically is, uh, not going to be usable anymore, probably going to be totaled out. Uh, that's just the eyeballing of it. Yeah, that, that, the hydraulics on the back were completely, um.
Is this a new one?
No, that's not the new truck. That's not the new truck. I thought that at first. That's not, okay, the new truck is a rear-end loader. It's not the rear-end loader. It's one of the automated trucks. Yes, one on the arm, but, okay, so let me go back a couple of weeks. Couple of weeks ago, uh, garbage was late being picked up. This particular truck, the arm did not work. This is a two thousand, Ms. Ramsey did the research on this. We bought this truck in two thousand and sixteen. Apparently, we paid, uh, two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, I think what she told us, back in two thousand and sixteen, so it's been in use for, uh, close to ten years now. Uh, we had some trouble out of the arm a couple of weeks ago. It took for an entire week. We had to have, we had one truck that picked up garbage. That was the new truck, the rear-end loader. The rear-end loader requires people. Uh, the guys walk along, they walk the carts up, they dump the trash. Also, they had to use one of the front-end loaders. That's the one that picks up the dumpster. They, they use it to pick up a dumpster and carry it around, and then guys dumped carts in, into that, uh, into that dumpster. That always scares me because people can get injured that way. However, uh, it took them all week using that one truck to pick up the entire city. Uh, on Monday of last week, after two trips to Memphis and some, some telephone conversation with, uh, the company in Memphis, they got that arm working, and so we got back on schedule last week. It's this particular truck, because of, of course, the automated truck can pick up more garbage than the walk behind. Walk behind is more reliable, but the automated truck can pick up more garbage, can handle it faster. So this one is not usable anymore, probably totaled. And we're down to that one truck again to pick up residential garbage. So that's why I said garbage pickup is going to be impacted. So we're down to that one truck. Ms. Ramsey, uh, got on, got on the ball today. We tried to get insurance claims filed, but we don't even have a report yet. So we'll try to verify coverage for the, the person who hit the truck. It's probably not enough to buy a garbage truck. We have some coverage. I don't know what they're paying. Those things are unknown to us at this point, so we don't know what timeframe we're looking at if we're trying to replace it. Um, but, but we'll know it's, in the coming days and weeks. Uh, our immediate concern is that during that period of time, when we only had one truck, we had guys working around the clock every day, picking up garbage. That meant overtime. So we're going to have some more overtime. We also have a second alternative. I asked them to assemble some numbers for me so that we can find out how, how much we spent in overtime, uh, have, using all of those, our people I asked them to assemble some numbers for me so that we can find out how, how much we spent in overtime, uh, have, using all of those, our people versus sometime a, a year or so ago, a couple of years ago, we paid someone to come in and we rented a truck and had a guy who came in contract. That's a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour. And so what we need to decide is if we're gonna pay the overtime or if we're gonna pay the contract. Probably for our citizens, it's better if we do the contracting. Uh, but that's for you guys to decide how you wanna spend your money. It's gonna cost us some extra money in the short run. And that's because we only have one operational truck. This is one of those things, when I say we're fragile, this is one of those things we were really fragile on. Uh, we got one boom truck in operation. We had two garbage trucks and one front-end loader in operation and we lost one of those residential pickup trucks today. So. My suggestion? Approve a certain, approve a certain amount of money for contracting. Um, the guys picked up for us before, so they'll know the routes.
The contract cost is how much?
It's a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. So if you, if you do that, let's say, let's, let's, let's look at it a different way. Uh, how many hours a day? Let's say maybe
eight hours a day?
Six. I'm, I'm just making up these numbers, cause I don't know how many hours it would take. Let's say six hours a day, six times one twenty-five. It's seven fifty times five. That would be thirty-seven hundred a week. Um, the overtime, I don't have, let's see if I can figure out. It gets into something. I don't know what the total is on the overtime. I don't know what the total, because we haven't finished the pay period yet, so that overtime hasn't been totally calculated in the system yet. But I know they, they, they basically work seven days because they only had that one truck to pick up all the garbage, so. My suggestion is maybe you approve a week and then we see where we are next week.
You what?
I said, my suggestion is maybe you approve a week and then we Ms. Ramsey says the adjuster will be here to take a look at the truck on Monday, so we'll have someone here next week, so perhaps we approve a week. I'm just guessing at that number, thirty-seven hundred dollars, and then the adjuster will be here. Maybe we'll know more about the truck, the damaged truck.
It might be the thing to do in an emergency.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, sir. What, what Mr. Valley was saying is you'll have to call a special call meeting if we don't, you know, if it's not, if we don't have something resolved by next week and clearly, we probably won't, but we'll know more next week.
Yeah.
So we can approach it in that manner. At least you'll know what you're getting into.
Yeah.
And we don't go down the road of, you know, we have a habit of spending money on things and then figuring out months later that we should have bought something. And so let's, let's, if we take it in small bites, we can figure out next week where we are and then we can do an assessment as to what we need to do. That's my suggestion.
To pick up our garbage for one week.
And, and that's at a hundred and twenty-five dollars an.
Five dollars an hour.
Second.
Motion by Davis to approve, uh, retaining the contractor to pick up garbage at a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. Uh, second by Ms. Miller. Is there any discussion?
Claire, if your one week, that will conclude this week and next week's round?
No, that's, that's gonna be.
This week's round.
That'll be this week's round and then we'll reassess next week. We'll take it on a week-by-week basis. Any discussion? Uh, Madam Clerk, what you call it all?
Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Ethel Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Saint Columbia? Dr. Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Mayor, what, what are we gonna do about another truck?
Another truck? Since it's just happened today, we haven't had time to do all of the, the research. One of the things that we need to do is just check to see what it's gonna cost to replace it and then it'll also play into what we find out from the adjuster. Um, we're pretty certain it's gonna be totaled out. We don't know how much money that's gonna get us, cause we'll only get market value for the truck. Market value is not gonna be what it was ten years ago, right? So we'll have some money to play with. We just don't know how much. So we'll see, we'll search the market over these next few days and we'll see what's out there and what's available for us. So when we come back next week, we'll know that we're, what we're doing and we'll know what the cost of replacement is gonna be. So, again, it happened at ten o'clock this morning, so don't know all the, the moving parts just yet.
That's why I saw five police cars going in a straight line on Fourth Street.
Uh, yes, sir. That, that probably was.
That's what it was.
Yes, sir. And, and by the time I got there, they had removed the, uh, the minivan. They were towing it away. But it was, uh, it was not a nice-looking scene and so hopefully, you know, the person who was driving that vehicle is also okay. Uh, but we don't know the condition of it at this point.
Amazing you can walk away with that accident. That car is in bad shape.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Pretty bad accident. Um, next item on the agenda is gonna be, uh, I just got this today, so I, I slipped in two event permits and that's because they came in late, but uh, these are time-sensitive, so we wanna go ahead and try to take care of them. Uh, there's an event permit for Central High School Homecoming Parade. And as you know, every year during homecoming, Central has a parade. I think they start on Fourth Street, uh, Plaza, I'm sorry. They start on Plaza, maybe at Fourth and Plaza, if I'm not mistaken. And then they go all the way down to, uh, the high school. They have turned, submitted a permit to conduct their parade. It's gonna take place on, uh, da-da-da-da-da-da. What's the date on that?
October tenth.
October tenth. Thank you, Ms.
Yeah.
Davis. October the tenth, and that's a Friday, and it usually takes place in the afternoon. Um, I have it here and all of the department heads have signed off on it, um, so.
I believe we approve, uh, their request.
Okay. Motion by Saint Columbia to approve the event permit request for the Homecoming Parade for Central High School Homecoming. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Miller. Uh, any discussion? Madam Clerk, what you call it all?
Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Saint Columbia?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Messina?
Yeah.
Mayor Ethel Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Six yes.
Delta Magic.
Next is an event permit from Delta Magic. Uh, they're having an Oktoberfest block party. Um, that's gonna take place, uh, the date is October the second, I believe. No.
Fourth.
October fourth. And so, and so, no, well, it says October fifth.
Oh, sorry about that.
Yeah, no, no problem, no problem. October fifth at ten AM. Oh, well, they have conflicting dates. They got October fourth and October fifth. But it's their permit. It's gonna be on whichever date is a Saturday. It marks it as Saturday, so they got two dates in there. October, October fifth. That's gonna be a Saturday, so Delta Magic. And they're having an Oktoberfest event down there. Says block party, celebrating a fall festival with local vendors, food trucks and activities. They also have all of the, um, the signatures. And is there a motion to approve that permit?
I shall move. Second.
Motion by Saint Columbia to approve the permit of Delta Magic. Second by Mr. Messina. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, what you call it all?
Mayor Ethel Lee?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Messina?
Yeah.
Mr. Saint Columbia?
Yeah. Yes, that's fine.
Yes. Also, that's the last item on the agenda. You should have in your packet an ordinance permitting the disposal of grass clippings, yard waste and other litter on the public streets, sidewalks and right-of-ways in the city of Helena, West Helena. This is for your review. It will actually be on the agenda for the first meeting in October, but wanted to get it to you so you can take a look at it between now and then. Uh, see if you have any questions on it. That's gonna be for code enforcement. Yes, sir.
I also wanna say something too. I sent you guys a text. I know it's last minute, but there's a, uh, event that's being planned for the same time as Blues Fest, uh, on the, on the river, uh, at the River Park. And, uh, I just wanna know if maybe the chief can kinda look into that because we got things going with Blues Fest and that going on at the River Park. That could just all be kind of a confusion. I sent you guys a text about it, but it's.
You, you did.
But they have not, they have not asked for a permit.
They haven't asked for a permit. I did.
They may not know that they need to do that.
And this is not on the group?
Well, I.
Yeah, that's, I think that's on the.
It's just cherry.
I, I reached out to that individual.
Okay.
Um, and I got, I, I sent a message on Messenger and it kicked back saying it didn't accept messages, but somebody got in contact with it.
Okay.
He called me the other day. He told me, I told him that in order to use city facilities, you have to have an event permit and it has to be approved by the council. He told me that they do not intend to use any city facilities. Um, and so, uh, he, he asked a different question about a different, uh, a different something. And I told him he needed to see code enforcement for an occupational permit. So what was presented to me is that those things that are on that advertisement are not gonna happen. That they, they are not gonna have any events at the River Park, the Helena Park or the like. That's what was told to me. If they do, they don't have a permit, they would be subject to being shut down because you have to have a permit. And so I understand what you're saying about the Blues Festival and different events going on. But right now, there's no permit that's been, um, presented. And so I would imagine that the, the chief would say, no, we can't handle all of those things at once.
Yeah.
But so he would have to get past the chief first before it even made it to this, to this form. So right now, what was told to me is that they do not intend to have anything to use as those city facilities.
Okay.
So.[1768.54]